So we left the house around five to get an appetizer and a drink in Concord on the way to get to Manchester, so by the time you gotta get ready to leave at five, I mean it's like chop the day up because you couldn't just hang out on the deck and do whatever, so. Get ready on top of everything else, so. Thought it was a good show, they did a good job, but.
David, I saw Forty Second Street down at the Palace. I saw Forty Second Street down at the Palace.
He's got one if he can't find it.
What's this over here?
That'll fit him.
Oh.
Perfect.
Don't want to ruin his model.
No, 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 it's a good look, David.
Nice culture.
I got this white shirt here.
You look good.
He's got his Marlon Brando thing going there.
He's got to roll up his cigarettes in sleeves.
Forgotten that's right.
Colonel.
And this isn't even this year's.
Yes, it is. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It's this year's, I'm gonna say.
I know.
You're not gonna wear it, I gotta give it back.
So where did you get it?
My friend.
Carry on.
I'm wearing, I'm wearing an old one.
The old ones I got, you can't wear anymore.
I've got a couple of those.
Okay, good evening, we ready to go, Commander Clark? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hour is seven o'clock and as mayor, I hereby call to our regular meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for June 11, 2018 at this hour. We begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, we'll note that City Clerk Cheryl Hebert is keeping the minutes tonight, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowns?
Here.
Counselor Lippman? Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
I'm gonna say here to.
For the budget meeting, we had all here.
Put Counselor Hamel on an island here. All right, let the record show that, two things, Counselor Lippman is traveling today and will not be able to attend today's meeting, and, but we do have five counselors present, so a quorum has been established for this meeting. And also note for the record that the council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. One announcement I'd like to make here to the council before we get started is that there's going to be a slight change in the agenda for tonight, and that is that we're going to move the City Manager's Report from its traditional location on the agenda up to the position following approval of minutes. So that will come right after the approval of minutes, we'll get to the City Manager's Report tonight. And also note, the obvious for our guests this evening, both here in the Arm and A Bullock Council Chamber and in the, our TV audience tonight, that the council is celebrating Laconia, the 95th Laconia Motorcycle Week this evening with our T-shirts and informal dress, except for Counselor Bowns, who is doing his Marlon Brando impression. And, but he's well within, well in the spirit of things anyway, right?
Absolutely.
We welcome all our guests that'll be with us this week to our city. And, so we'll get right into business here then, the acceptance of minutes. We have three sets of minutes before us tonight. First off, we have the regular meeting minutes from May 29th. Those minutes were distributed to the council on May 31st. No changes or corrections were submitted to the clerk, and so unless there's any objection at this point in time, I'm gonna declare the minutes to our regular meeting on May 29th to be accepted as submitted. Next up, we had a special budget meeting that night, and the minutes to the special budget meeting on May 29th were distributed again also on May 31st. No changes were proposed, and so unless there are some now, I'm going to declare the minutes to our special meeting on May 29th to be submitted, or to be approved as submitted by the clerk. And finally, for our special budget meeting held on June 4th, those minutes are also in the, in the council's packets, and those minutes were distributed that same day, June 4th, my goodness, that same day. No changes or corrections were submitted to the clerk, and so if there are none now, I'm going to declare the minutes to our special meeting on June 4th, approved as submitted by the clerk. And so we are now to the City Manager's Report, and I recognize Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you want the whole report or just the one item we spoke of at this point?
That's up to you.
Okay, so I would just give you one item now and then come back to my report at its regular spot in the meeting. I did speak with the mayor this morning, I did receive a piece of correspondence that could have some bearing on tonight's meeting, and he asked me if I would read it early on in the meeting. So I do have a letter that came from Brewster Ambulance Service dated today, asked to my attention as City Manager for the City of Laconia, and I will read it. Dear Mr. Myers, at this time Brewster Ambulance Service is formally withdrawing our response to RFP 1803-02, Emergency Ambulance Service. Although we feel Brewster Ambulance Service would have built the best emergency service system for the City of Laconia, we were under the impression the decision was already made to privatize. In light of recent events, we feel it is not in our best interest to continue this process. Brewster Ambulance Service strives to build the best emergency system, uh, sorry, emergency service systems, and with that being said, our relationships with fire departments are not only important to us as a company, but they are also crucial for the success of the system. We will never compete with any fire department, it would be detrimental to the values we have built this company with. Sincerely, Mark Brewster, President and CEO, Brewster Ambulance Service, 25 Main Street in Waymouth, Massachusetts.
Do you have anything to add to that?
I do not at this time, no.
Okay. Let me ask you one question, and then I'm gonna open it to question, if the council has any questions of you in this regard, and the one question that I would have would be, in terms of the, we had a recommendation from the committee that was formed to review the proposals that came from private ambulance companies, and we were, the recommendation was, as I understand it, only to consider seriously the, the proposals submitted by Brewster. And so the obvious question is now, to your knowledge, is there, is there any other private company in the picture at this point in time reasonably that, that we should keep this idea, if you will, of outsourcing the EMS service to a private company alive?
I think I can speak for the committee, Counselor Cheney was part of it, so we can certainly speak, but through our review of the proposals, this was the only recommendation that we felt warranted being brought forward, and, and staff, myself, Finance Director, Purchasing Specialist concur with that recommendation, or that, that, that way of thinking as well, that there is not another viable option that we would be recommending that the council consider at this point.
So it would be fair to say that for, for our audience's sake and for the council's sake, that the, the concept of moving responsibility for EMS service out of the fire department to a private company is no longer viable?
At this point, that would be accurate, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the manager on this subject?
I guess I'll just briefly comment and say that I think the process was, we were undergoing was helpful and productive for the city in the long run in the terms of how we approached our obligations, not only to keep our citizens safe, but to watch out for the city's bottom line. And I'm just disappointed that Brewster has chosen to withdraw their, their offer at this time. I understand their reasoning, but I just want to express my disappointment. Thank you.
Counselor Cheney?
I'd like to echo Counselor Bowns's comments, and although I agree with the manager, there are no other viable options at this time, I don't think it's an issue that should be forgotten. We may have to take a year to, to deal with it. But Brewster, despite what most folks who wrote or called or whatever said, at least in my view, made a proposal that was outstanding. And I'm very disappointed we didn't have a chance to review it publicly. I think there's more to why Brewster pulled out, and that upsets me even more. And I hope we get a chance at some point to discuss that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Hamel?
I have to agree with both counselors. It's disappointing that a chance wasn't given to this proposal. I think it could have been actually an extremely good working relation between them and the fire department if a chance would have been given. They, they brought to the table a extensive amount of services that would have been offered to the city, in the ambulance service, the paramedics and all that there, and working relation with the fire department, I think would have been great. It would have taken a lot of the excess burden off our fire department and allowed them to do other things, and I, I think it would have been good. Unfortunately, the withdrawal of them was, was unfortunate that they did that, because like, like I say, I think it would have been a good work, working relationship. They brought a lot to the table. So we won't be able to, to do that at this time, but like, like Bruce says, maybe sometime in the future. It is truly something that I think that it would have been a good thing for the city.
Anyone else? Counselor Haynes?
I'd just like to thank Bruce and the committee for a job well done. I think that they investigated the situation and looked into it and gave us an excellent report, so thank you Bruce and Scott for your, the work that you did.
Echo that.
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. I will note for the, for the sake of our audience that, so the, the subject of the ambulance service is, is, or ambulance issue is not anywhere else on tonight's agenda. In a few minutes here, I think we have just one other little brief item of business, and then we will get to public comment for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council, not just on this issue, but in this issue, if you're here tonight to address the council on the issue of the ambulance or EMS service, that would be the appropriate time to do so. So either in reaction to this announcement tonight, or just in general, if you have something to say to the council on this agenda, we'll get to that in just a minute. All right, so we are at consent and action items, there's just one before us tonight, and that has to do with the annual Laconia Multicultural Festival, which is on September 8th this year. I don't have, for some reason, I don't have page numbers on the agenda this night, tonight, but the, the order is in your packet, and this is simply a renewal, as I understand it, of previous years. Mr. Stamps is here tonight, if there's any questions. I assume this is the same as it's always been?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, so a motion to be in order to approve temporary traffic order 2018-10, and to waive licensing and special event fees in connection with the 2018 Laconia Multicultural Festival. That motion's made by Counselor Hamel, is there a second? Counselor Bowns seconds that motion. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carry and carried and is approved.
Mayor, by the way, Gale Avenue is a great spot for windsurfing as well.
I'm sorry?
Gale Avenue is also a great spot for windsurfing.
Windsurfing.
Yes.
Thank you for that input. Okay, so we are to public comment for matters not on tonight's agenda. This is the appropriate spot in our agenda tonight for anyone who is here this evening who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Not on tonight's agenda. I think some of you are here to talk about Pogus Park Drive tonight, and that is on the agenda, so that'll come up later in the meeting. Your chance to address the council on that. Anyone wish to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Nobody? Okay. Let's see, we have no nominations, commission, public hearings, mayor's report, I guess, is next. Two quick items. One is on the Colonial Theater front. I would like to announce that the Melnap Economic Development Council Board of Directors had a meeting on Friday, and at that meeting, they agreed to form a, what's, what's being called a steering committee, a joint steering committee comprised of members of the BEDC Board and, and members of this council to steer, manage, whatever the proper word is, the Colonial Theater renovation project forward from this point in time. I think it's kind of a matter of common knowledge at this point in time that the so-called funding stack for that project has encountered some difficulty, and so the decision was made to, to form this committee of both the EDC Board members and council members working together to, to try to get this project back on track. And to that end, there are going to be three members of, three people sitting at this head table tonight who will be members of that committee appointed by me, and so I'm making tonight those appointments, and that will be Counselors Lippman and, and Hamel and myself as the mayor. So the three of us will represent the city on that committee, and Counselor Bowns will be the alternate member of that committee. And so if one of the three of us is unable to attend any of the meetings, Counselor Bowns will, will, will sit at the table. It is, and I'll just say for the record here, for the rest, for everyone else and for the public, that this size of the committee was carefully constructed because BEDC is a private enterprise, private concern, and, and their wish is to have their meetings private, and so therefore not more than three people who sit at this table in official capacity may be in the room at any given time. So their members can come and go as they are invited and whatnot, but we are limited to three of us in the room at a time, otherwise we would have to post the meeting as a public meeting. So that's, that's, so everyone else is gonna have to rely on the three people who actually attend to provide reports and whatnot on, on what has happened. The second thing I want to mention real quickly is congratulations to the Laconia High School Girls Lacrosse Team, which last week won its third state championship, Division III State Championship in four years' time, and very exciting, and the boys almost won the state championship. They got to the championship game and, and finished as the state runner-up in Division III as well. So our burgeoning reputation as the lacrosse capital of New Hampshire, at least for smaller cities and towns and whatnot, is, is intact, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to have these young ladies in again in the near future to congratulate them in person. So congratulations to Coach Howe and the members of the state champion Laconia High School Girls Lacrosse Team. Committee reports, I'm not aware of any tonight. Anybody have any committee business that we need to discuss? How about liaison reports?
I guess then I'll just bring forward that at our regularly scheduled meeting in June, the chairman of the planning board, Mr. Gattardo, William Gattardo, stepped down, and Peter Brunet has been elected the chairman of the planning board along with Edwin Bonas as vice chair, and.
Oh, I noticed the pronunciation there. Is that a concession on your part?
No, I thought you said it wrong last time. I'm, I'm pronouncing it right, as far as I know. And a secretary, um. Yeah.
I'm getting flustered now.
I just get so relaxed, you know, I just like, you know, me and this microphone are, are enemies, I guess. What's his name, Mike somebody?
Mike somebody?
Foot?
No, no, I'm having a.
What did Mike do?
I'm having a brain freeze, huh?
What did Mike do?
He's the secretary.
Oh.
Delavecchia.
Delavecchia, right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now I'm gonna shut up, thank you.
All right.
Lawyer, that's not gonna happen.
Thank you for your report, Counselor. Any other liaison reports tonight? Okay, so we are on now to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time on the agenda for anyone who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Who's gonna be first here?
I am Daisy Pierce, the Executive Director of Navigating Recovery of the Lakes Region, and one of the agenda items tonight is to have a reading of the resolution, I believe is what it's called, for the public hearing. We're requesting that the city sponsor our application for community development block grant funds to purchase our own standalone building on 102 Court Street. So I'm passing around an explanation of what the project is. You guys are currently backing Lakes Region Community Developers for $150,000 of that community development block grant fund. There's $500,000 available, and so we are requesting a support to apply for the other $350,000.
All right, any questions at this point in time? Well, if you're gonna stick around for the actual motion, then we'll, we'll reserve the right to call you back if you agree, if we have any questions. Any questions at this point in time? I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. James, welcome, sir.
Tim James, I live on Pogus Park Road, and I was hoping to address you on the agenda item this evening for the parking issue. I, I printed out some documents I'd like to share with the council.
Just hand it to the clerk and she'll toss them around.
Have to share a little. So just briefly, by way of history, Pogus Park Road, where we live, 20 years ago, the residents down there, there's about 30 houses on Pogus Park Road, it's a dead-end street on both sides. About 20 some odd years ago, it was a dirt road, and the residents at the time banded together and made it assess themselves basically, and paid for the road to be paved. So now it's maintained by the city. And about six or seven years ago, there was a development up behind Pogus Park Road, Nature's Walk, where they put about 60 homes up in there. And since that time, they've had some drainage issues down on Pogus Park Road, and it started to affect some of the neighbors. So last year, we got a notification from the Public Works Department that they were gonna do a drainage ditch to deal with some of this drainage issues that we had. And I, for one, didn't understand that the drainage ditch was going to be so intrusive to our street. I thought maybe it would be a drainage ditch that gets covered back over, because right now, people, people use the land across the street on the, on the railroad track side to, to park, for overflow parking. And if you can see that picture right there, I just took that the other day, basically that drainage ditch that they, that they dug is about three feet deep by three or four feet wide, and we've already had some incidents with that ditch. It's really close to the road, and basically it makes it impossible for, for emergency vehicles, or even the trash guys, to get down there right now. The other day, the other day, we had cars parked up the lakeside of Pogus Park Road, and the trash truck tried to get down the street and basically couldn't get down. He had to get one, one person to move their car, and you can see what's happening is that all the pavement now, close to the ditch, is starting to, to starting to break, because when the heavy trucks come down there, there's not any support anymore for the pavement. So if you look at the second drawing, we engaged a engineering firm just on our own, on our own dime to come up with some renderings about maybe what we could possibly do down there on that street that may be a better solution for all the neighbors. There's a couple of issues that we're dealing with. With the Department of Transportation, since they own the land from the railroad tracks to the road, I think their concern that they've expressed a couple times is that there's been encroachment up onto the train tracks. We had a couple incidents where the train actually had to stop while some cars moved away from the train tracks, so they have a, they have a concern about encroachment onto the train tracks. You know, the Public Works Department was just basically trying to deal with the issue of drainage, so they came and thought that the, that the, you know, the ditch would solve that, that issue. But it's really impacting the neighbors, and a few of my neighbors are here this evening, it's really starting to impact the neighbors negatively. First of all, it's a safety issue, it's hard to get, it's a safety issue in terms of, we've already had a contractor drive his truck into the ditch. It's a safety issue for emergency vehicles getting up and down the road, et cetera. So we went out independently, got this engineering firm to design this rendering that you can take a look at, and basically what that shows is that the, that the, what we, what we propose in this drawing is that we would pave over the existing drainage ditch, maybe put some kind of, you know, piping in there and pave over it, and then put a fence up all along the, the train tracks to, to, to deal with the encroachment issue that the DOT has. And then you can see that the, the engineer kind of came up with an architectural design there with the, with the little flower pots or whatever where the actual drainage is, but this would, this would resolve a couple issues. It would give us the parking on the other side of the street, parallel parking, which would still allow, allow the emergency vehicles to get through, and it would also address the issue of the DOT and encroachment to the train tracks. We have a, you know, we have a less expensive solution, which would be just fill that existing drainage ditch in with some granite rocks, maybe like some large granite rocks, you know, wouldn't be as, you know, visually appealing as, as this rendering, but at least it would give us the ability to get, you know, some parking over there, or at least get some cars to go through there. Right now, we've got a real significant problem, and I, I think just dealing with the parking issue is just a one piece of a smaller issue. I think what, what I kind of hear advocating for is that the committee consider maybe facilitating a deeper dive discussion with the Public Works Department, maybe acting as a facilitator with the DOT. And my attorney, who's been working on this with, with me, has kind of been playing Switzerland and getting these different people involved. It would be great to get the city council's support on that, you know, and just try to get everybody on the same page, maybe have a meeting and see if we can work, work this out cooperatively. I know that the neighbors, after speaking to a lot of neighbors on the street, are willing, are even willing to help underwrite some of this solution, but we're trying to get something that just works for everybody, basically.
Is the, is the current ditch that there, that's there now, does that run the entire length of the street or only the southern end?
It runs the whole length, and they stopped about, I would say probably 80% down the street, because I guess there, there's a neighbor at the, at the far end of the street away from South Down that had the, the biggest issues with the drainage, and he had expressed some concern to the Public Works Department, and so they've been, they've said that they want to take a, a step back and analyze his specific concern before they finish that last 20%. The, the, the half of the street that's over near South Down, a drainage ditch has been there for years. It's kind of been, it's overgrown with things and stuff now, but the, the, this ditch that the picture reflects is, I'm not sure if it's the south side, but it's the far side away from South Down.
Counselor Hamel has a question.
The rendering you have with the improvements, do you know how much of the railroad corridor that, that would go, go on to?
I, I think it gives, I think, you know, it varies because of the road gets closer and closer to the train tracks at different spots on the road, but I think that rendering was after a discovery. But I think that rendering was after a discussion with the DOT to ask them how much room they needed for the train to go through, and then a few extra feet from... You know, in other words, they told us that we needed 10 feet away from the railroad tracks for the train to safely get through that corridor, so the fence is off that by like a foot or two. Because in some spots, like in front of my house, there may be 30 feet to the train tracks, but then there's other spots that's only probably 15, 20 feet to the train tracks.
I believe the, I believe that the railroad right away on the lakeside there is 28 feet from the center of the tracks. I think it's offset 38 feet on the land side, 28 feet on the lakeside, that the state actually owns.
This isn't, the train, does it go by the lake there, or is it, so it's in front of your houses?
Yes. Well, behind that, I mean, I would consider the front of my house the lake.
Yeah.
But this goes right by the house, yeah.
On the backside?
Yes, yes, sir. That's the one that goes, you know, through Southdown, and then when it comes up Pogus Park Road, it's on the backside of our houses, so...
Yeah, the lake is your front side?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Tim. The cracked pavement I see, which is pretty close to the ditch, is that, do you know, is the timing of those cracks consistent when the ditch was put in?
There were some cracks before, but it's definitely, it's getting noticeably worse since the ditch went in. And that's, you know, we have construction trucks that go up there, there's a lot of building going on our street, there's the trash truck that goes twice a week, and then, you know, obviously, one of the concerns has been emergency vehicles, fire trucks and stuff. But the heavy trucks are the building trucks and the trash truck that go every week. And they, basically what happens is that, particularly on a busy Thursday, Friday, Saturday, everybody starts parking up on the lakeside, and so that they're forced to go further and further over towards the ditch, to the point where their tires are basically on the sand.
What's the story on the foot bridges in this picture?
What's happening is that all the neighbors are, because they had little flower gardens over there, or they would go on the other side of the track to throw their leaves and stuff, or they'd take their dogs to walk in that land. They basically are starting to build these little bridges each person, so they can walk over the ditch.
So whose land are they throwing their stuff on?
The leaves?
Yeah.
I think that's the DOT land. They cross the tracks and they put their leaves over in the woods up there, up by Nature's Walk.
I imagine those woods belong to somebody.
Yeah.
So, can I bring my leaves down to your house?
I don't do it, it's not, you know, I'm not, I can't really speak intelligently about that particular issue.
But the, did you got, did most of everybody got a letter from DOT about parking next to the tracks? Because we got one from there.
Yeah, we got that, yeah.
Because it's railroad property, correct?
Right, yeah. That's why, that's why the rendering has the fence there to alleviate their concern of encroachment onto the train tracks. Because it really was never the neighbors that were the land, the property owners that were doing it. It was the people that would come visit that didn't understand it was an active terrain, that would pull their car up close to the train track.
Yeah, gotcha, okay. No, I think that's, you know, it's an attractive proposal, you know, it looks really nice.
I think the condition it's in right now is a real eyesore, and I think it has an effect on the property values there as well. But though I haven't been here long, it seems rare that you have citizens come in and say they're willing to work with the city and work on a solution that they might consider assisting with financially. It seems, it seems very reasonable to me to try to improve this area, protect the value of the land, and also, you know, it looks good. It looks very nice, actually, so I think it'd be a great improvement for that street.
Well, I think step number one would be to get, somebody needs to get DOT involved, because this is clearly on their land. And we would be making the improvement that we've made regardless of who's paying for it, or what percentage or whatnot, is clearly on state land.
So the...
Any other comments or questions?
So the proposal tonight is really what to do about the parking on Pogus Park Road. So, what's your recommendation with respect to that? What do you want to see happen with the parking on the road?
I'm just concerned that if you just deal with that sliver of the bigger issue, that it doesn't address, you know, the, from a macro level, the big issue here. And I think that my, I'm advocating that you kinda just park that and we work this issue, the drainage issue, because that impacts the parking issue. I mean, to just say that you can't park on that side of the road anymore, the west side of the road, it forces everybody to park on the lakeside of the road, which aggravates the issue of, you know, trucks coming down there that can't get by there. I know that the real issue is emergency, but it's also the other trucks that get down there that are continuing to erode the road, you know, and then it's falling into the ditch.
Okay. Counselor Cheney?
I understand you're asking us to join with you in looking for a solution with DOT and Public Works. Am I correct, that's what you're looking for tonight, is...
Looking for leadership support in Laconia to join that kinda group in getting this resolved. I think that just the parking issue, to say, okay, no parking on the west side, it just doesn't, it's just gonna, it's just gonna exasperate the problem.
I, I, I think I understand that he'd like us to participate in finding solutions, and I certainly would support that and encourage that, Mayor.
Counselor Hamel?
How far have you gone in contacting DOT or their railroad people on the feasibility of this, up to now?
You know, we've had a number of discussions with them, and then is it Wes from the Public?
Yeah, he's right there.
Wes, okay, oh, hey, Wes. I think my lawyer, John, has had a couple of conversations with you, and so he's talked to the DOT. I think he was really trying to understand what their real main concern was, and I think that what we'd get down to it, the main concern was encroachment. I mean, you know, there were some issues with the people building sheds and stuff on their property, and they had come around and asked members on our street to sign a lease, to lease the land. And so, I don't know if any of our neighbors ever did that, but I think from our lawyer's discussion, the primary issue was the encroachment issue.
Are there still sheds on the land?
There's one left, I think, and I've seen the neighbor, he's got a, he's got a temporary storage units to start moving stuff off, because they've asked him to take it off.
Anyone else?
I think that's very reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to address the council on this matter? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Tom Thibagey, 228 Pogus Park Drive. Just to add to what Tim had mentioned, is, you know, I've been there 27 years. It's a great place, been coming up here since I was 10. And I think we've created a pretty bad situation from a safety perspective on that street. What's happened is, we, basically, we had parking across the street, wasn't our land, I didn't even know whose land it was, I assumed it was city land, but, you know, I've learned a lot since the time. But what we've done because of this situation is essentially, there's a lot of houses on that end of the street that don't have driveways. So, there's two options, either we park on the street now, or we put driveways in, and essentially, we'll have no green space. So my neighbor right next door to me just completed putting a driveway in the front of his house. So, he literally has zero, zero green space in front of his house, because he had no choice to do it. So right now, I'm parking on my side lawn and on the street. And the fear is that when the kids are out playing in the lake, and they get out of the water, and they wanna run across the street because the train's coming, so they can kinda wave to the people in the train that there's gonna be a car coming down the street, and, you know, just picture the scene. It's really a bad situation right now, on a holiday weekend, or any weekend, if you just took a ride down there, you'd see what I'm talking about. So, you know, Tim is trying to pull us together to work the issue, look at the big picture, and, you know, there's a lot of people that really, he's trying to get us organized and help. We're asking for your help, we'll do what we can do to try to organize, and, you know. I think the bottom line was, there were people that were taking advantage of a situation that didn't even understand they were doing it. Were never really called out on it, were never really given an opportunity to rectify the situation. And then, you know, we've gone into full discipline mode, put the trench in, it's ugly as sin, it couldn't have been more ugly, really. I mean, we thought that we're gonna put a nice little trench, put some green in it. Now what we have is a huge crater with hay, there's no green, it's, it is really bad. So even if we're gonna leave it the way it is, if we could finish the job and get it to look halfway decent, it might be more appreciated. So, whatever consideration this council can do and help us get through this, we would appreciate it.
Counselor Hamel has a question.
It might be for Tim, I'm not sure, but if this was to be done, how many parking spaces would that give you? And would it be adequate to, I mean, when you have a house on a lake, all your friends that you never knew of are your friends now. So, I mean, how would this relieve your situation?
I can't say how many spaces it would give us, but I think...
We need to come to the microphone, please.
I can't say for sure, but I think that the rendering was done to give each resident a couple of spots across the street from their house.
Sure.
Okay. Because, you know, I mean, looking at this, it's probably several hundred thousands of dollars to do this, I would think.
Well, you're talking about 60 parking spaces, then, right?
We're just, you're talking about just paving, you know, extending the road out, paving out over where the drainage ditch is now, so it's...
Yeah, no, but that, sometimes that isn't always that easy.
There's 30 houses?
Yeah.
So that's 60 parking spaces?
Well, there's, you can see then the design, that there's, there would be some spots taken up by the architectural design for the flower beds where the actual drainage is, so it'd probably be a little less than that, yeah, it'd probably be 50, yeah, 50.
Consider or not the flower beds to make more parking spaces. I mean, it looks nice, but...
Just where the drainage is.
Oh, where the intakes are for the thing, gotcha, okay.
Just try to make that look a little aesthetically put.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing, so this weekend, I had my, we had four vehicles, because my kids came up, and we ended up parking in front of the mailbox. So we got a bad boy notice from the post office for parking in front of the mailbox, but, I mean, this is just, there's no, you know, there's no good answer, so, anyways, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Nobody? Okay, thank you. Now to the balance of the city manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So your monthly financial and operational trends report is in your packet. Again, I apologize, we don't have individual page numbers, but it's the next section of your agenda. The top item is building permit reports, so we've started the new assessing year, the new building permit year, if you will, starts April 1st, so we're two months into it, and we're running at $2.5 million a year to date, so you can see that's down quite a bit from a year ago, and even down from where we were two years ago. So, a little bit slower start as far as building permits being pulled this year. We continue to be very busy, both in the Fire Department and the Police Department, as you can see on the second page of the report. Just following up on what the Finance Director, Donna Woodman, was speaking to last week, on the bottom of the first page, dealing with public assistance data. Again, no real rhyme or reason as to how this flows, so you can look in fiscal year 18. We're actually up, or probably will be by the end of the year, about $20,000 in relief over last year, and we're actually in a stronger economy. But you go back two years ago, we're pretty much on track where we were at that point two years ago. So, just because the economy's strong, or the economy's challenging, doesn't necessarily translate into more people or fewer people. But we are, we are busy in the Welfare Department with public assistance. On the bottom of page two of the report, you can see property tax collection. Again, we're running at the strongest level over the seven years listed there, just shy of 99%. Tax bills did go out a week or so ago, with a due date of July 2nd. A friendly reminder, I'm sure everybody loves to hear that. Bottom of that page, motor vehicle registration, again, as I've been saying for a number of times, May and June typically are the busiest months for renewals, and a fair number of lease renewals come up in those months. You can see that we did just barely cross the threshold of 100% of budget through the end of May, and we still have the month of June to go. So, the vehicle registration component, just short of the 2.6 million. You can see the municipal transportation revenue, that's the $5 per vehicle that is required by state law. If we do adopt that enabling legislation to allow us to collect that fee, that has to go specifically to a transportation-related issue. Doesn't necessarily mean cars and roads, but it could be bicycloaths, multipurpose paths, some kind of a transportation-related issue for those targeted funds. But based on our Public Works presentation as well, we have no shortage of need for transportation-related funds with our projects. We won't have a problem utilizing that. Page three shows the various departments and their overtime to date, in very small font, so it's challenging to read. You can see our facility use requests for the month of May jump back up as they do typically through the winter season. So on page four, you can see we're up to 12 requests for the month of May, and the month of June is typically a strong month as well. We did complete the one grievance, the top grievance there, from language that the city had submitted to the fire union back in 2015. Was finally accepted, and we came to a resolution on that grievance. We have a couple others still pending, but as you can see by some of the dates, a lot of these things don't move along very quickly. And I believe in most of the cases, two out of the three cases, I believe, that the ball, if you want to say, is in the employees' court on that particular thing. So I don't believe the city is lagging on anything. Page five, the impact fee revenues, you know, are pretty much where they were in the prior month, but collectively, we've got a little over $100,000 available there for the various departments. And again, I've spoken to a few of them for, the Police Department to be using one for the evidence drying station, the parks we spoke about for using their playground revitalization as well. So, those are the totals there. No changes to the totals in the expendable trust balances since we last met. And the final item, boat taxes, again, a very strong month coming in in May. So you can see in terms of the budget, we are anticipating $85,000 for this fiscal year, which ends at the end of this month. Sometimes there's a little bit of a lag time with receiving some of the final dollars that come in through some of the boat agents around the city, and we'll certainly assign those to the appropriate fiscal year as we wrap up the fiscal year. But you can see as percent of budget, we're running a little over 70%, which is the strongest point that has been. And again, a reminder, you know, folks can register their boats and their personal water crafts in Laconia City Hall, even if they are not Laconia residents, so we provide that service for them as well. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have this evening.
Any questions for the manager, Counselor Hamel?
Just one quick one, Scott, on to the expendable trust balances, the non-capital reserve. Where in the proposed budget is that?
Yeah, it's on page 11 on your capital, and we're not proposing to put anything in that, but on that side sheet that I handed out again last week, that shows how we would allocate up to $375,000 in contingency, it does show a recommendation of $22,000 being added to that account. So, if that were to be approved by the council, that would put that balance up at a little over $175,000 at that point. So it's about halfway down that page on the right-hand column?
Oh, yeah, I see it, okay.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Does that conclude your report?
That concludes it, thank you.
All right, we're on to new business. First item of new business is to schedule four public hearings for our regular meeting on June 25th, during the regular city council meeting regarding the, regarding community development grant projects. Packet is in your, information is in your packet, and it comes in two categories. But we need four motions tonight to execute this recommendation. The first two have to do with the Lakes Region Community Developers, which we used to know as the Community Land Trust. That's their new name, correct?
Yes, yes.
And their current office, as most of you probably know, is on Union Avenue. And across the street, same side of Union Avenue, as the Roma Joe's Coffee Shop. And they are planning to purchase what most everyone would refer to as the Walters Market Building on Court Street, and to move there as their new corporate headquarters, and they want to apply for, the short version is, a $150,000 community development block grant to aid in that quest, and they are requesting that we sponsor that application, if you will. And so, we've done another number of these, I think, do we have a, do we have a $500,000 allocation every year in that category?
$500,000 in that category, and $500,000 in the economic development category, and then I believe there are unlimited planning grant studies to get someone to this point, which... to get someone to this point, which I believe our maxed out at around twelve thousand dollars, if I recall correctly.
So, has, has our, is that allocation fiscal year or calendar year?
Maybe on the federal year, which would be in October 1st, these are federal funds, so I'm thinking that it's the-
So, to our knowledge, has there been, have we approved any requests to date in that category?
We have nodded through various departments. We've kind of reached out and said to anybody, were they doing it? And we did not find anybody else who was interested. The county also has the ability to sponsor these, and actually, in the next one, we'll speak to the county scoring, and I don't know all the nuances of how the scoring works, but needs for county versus needs for city. Sometimes the scores can be higher with one sponsor versus the other, and in the second applicant case, I think the score was twelve points higher if the city were to sponsor it versus the county, and therefore, that helps them in the competitive process in the queue, if you will, to get a higher score.
Anything else in the pipeline that you know of?
Nothing that we're aware of. We've asked around, and we're not aware of anything else that this is blocking or pushing out or that someone's hoping for.
Okay. Any questions before we get to motions on this particular issue? Somebody understand what it's about? All right, so motion number one would be to schedule a public hearing on June 25th, 2018, during the regular city council meeting regarding a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. The city will retain some of the funds for administration costs and sub-grant the benefits of the remainder to Lakes Region Community Developers toward the acquisition of 191 and 193 Court Street. LRCD proposes relocating its offices to this location to better serve their primarily low and moderate income clients. Someone care to make that motion, please? Councilor Hosmer makes a motion, is there a second? Councilor Hamel seconds the motion, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. Next is a piece of housekeeping, for those of you new to the city council. Every time you apply for a community development block grant, you are required under federal law to, to disclose whether or not anyone is going to be displaced by what you are doing or proposing to do. And so, we have to have a public hearing on that as well each and every time we do one of these. So, motion number two would be to schedule a public hearing on June 25th, 2018, during the regular city council meeting regarding the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan for the proposed Lakes Region Community Developers CDBG project. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Haynes seconds the motion, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, so that public hearing is scheduled as well. All right, the second pair tonight, as was addressed earlier by Daisy, is the proposed allocation, application to Community Development Finance Authority for up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. The city will retain up to twenty-three thousand dollars of the grant for administrative costs and sub-grant benefits, with the remainder going to Navigating Recovery of the Lakes Region for the acquisition and rehabilitation of 102 Court Street in Laconia, which is next to the coffee shop on Court Street that's across the street from the courthouse and was last occupied, I think, by Comfort-
Yes.
-Home Nurse Service, forget what it's called officially, but I think that's, I think that's who was in that building last. So, they're, they're, as we, I think we all know, they're in the Greenlaw's Building downtown now, up on the second or third floor, and they're proposing buying that building and moving to that building on Court Street, to be used as a recovery center where public services would be provided. New location would allow them to more than double the clients they could service at a time. The majority of clients are of low and moderate income. So, before we get to motions, is there any questions or comments that we need answered?
My only comment, Mr. Mayor, is I'm a member of the board of directors there, but have no financial interest in it. I don't, just for transparency's sake, I don't think I have to recuse myself necessarily.
Okay. Everybody aware that Councilor Hosmer is on the board of directors of Navigating Recovery? Councilor Hamel?
The only comment I want to make is that they would be moving from a building that is paying property taxes and purchasing a building and would not be paying property taxes. So, another building would be coming off the tax rolls. Quite a few months ago, I asked the city manager roughly how much property in Laconia is not taxed, and it's over five-hundred million dollars is what he told me, counting everything, state school, county churches, our school buildings, everything. So, Laconia seems to be being, you know, we just had one across the street that was purchased, that came off the tax rolls, just becoming a place where more and more buildings are being consumed by social businesses, which, you know, I don't disagree with what they do, but these properties are coming off the tax rolls and have to be picked up by, the burden has to be picked up by the, the property owners who do pay taxes, so, you know, there's always the thing of, we'll pay so much in lieu of taxes, but it never amounts to what the true tax of the property was. So, that's just a comment, not saying I'm not going to vote for it, but it's more and more being consumed.
Any objection to allowing Ms. Pierce to respond?
So, a portion of that property is occupied by My Coffee House, so when we purchased the 102 Court Street building, we would also get the My Coffee House, which is a for-profit business, so we would parcel that portion off and continue to pay taxes on that part of the land, and we would also do a, you know, an in lieu of taxes contribution that navigating could afford.
How much would that be, would that be equal to the property tax?
Well, so the property tax of 2017 was around seven thousand dollars. I don't imagine that the portion from My Coffee House would make up that much, but we could, we would be willing to work with the city in some kind of in lieu of tax donation.
Councilor Bounce has a question for you.
Well, in all fairness, we're not losing taxable property in downtown Laconia. One tenant is moving out to another piece of property in, in Laconia, but we're not, the building is going to remain there. I mean, the Conde Nast Tracys are going to stay there, and they're going to be looking to rent that place, I assume, so.
Their purchasing ability that will come off the tax rolls, that's what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, just bringing it up. We're getting more and more, pretty soon it's going to be a non-tax, non-tax city. It's going in that direction.
Okay, are we ready to get to motions on this concern? Okay, motion be in order to move to schedule a public hearing on June 25, 2018, during the regular city council meeting regarding a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. The city will retain up to twenty-three thousand dollars of the grant for administrative costs and sub-grant benefit, and sub-grant benefits of the remainder to Navigating Recovery of the Lakes Region for the acquisition and rehabilitation of 102 Court Street in Laconia to be used as a recovery center where public services will be provided. The new location will allow them to more than double the clients they service at a time, the majority of the clients are of low and moderate income. Someone care to make that motion, please? Councilor, Councilor Bounce makes the motion, is there a second? Councilor Cheney seconds the motion, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. And then, again, on the housekeeping end, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing on June 25, 2018, during the regular city council meeting regarding the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan for the proposed Navigating Recovery Community Development Block Grant Project. Have a motion for that, please. Councilor Bounce, is there a second? Councilor Cheney seconds it, any discussion? All's in favor of scheduling that public hearing, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion is, carries as well. Okay, we are on to a really important piece of business, the request to sign the unlicensed dog warrant for 2018. Someone care to make a motion to issue the warrant as presented for 2018 unlicensed dogs?
I'd make it, but I wonder if I registered my dog.
Me too.
Could be a lot of conflicts of interest on this one.
He'll be in jail by the night, by the night.
All right, one of you with a clear conscience, please make the motion.
Well, I'm out of this.
Councilor Hamel makes the motion, and Councilor Haynes has a clear conscience, and he seconds the motion. Any discussion? All's in favor of issuing the dog warrant, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries.
Your dogs look good in striped suits.
Don't take my dog.
All right, item C under new business is a request from Laconia Parks and Recreation Department to utilize non-capital reserve funds for the Weers Community Center projects. Mr. Myers, you want to take this one?
I will hand it right off to Mr. Dunleavy, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, welcome back, Mr. Dunleavy.
Thank you. So, this request is for two, really two components to it. At the Weers Community Center, we have a restroom facility that's original to, public restrooms as part of the community center that are original to the building, in disrepair, no longer compliant with ADA. And the Weers Community Park Association, who handles all the rentals for this facility, have pledged to cover half the cost of the renovation, and so it looks like it's a good opportunity for a public-private partnership here to, to get a much-needed improvement at that facility. That amount is, that I'm requesting is twenty-five thousand dollars. The additional twenty-four thousand, whatever, amount would be covered by the Weers Community Park Association. Additionally, there's a second component to this request, that is for eight thousand dollars from the non-capital reserve to replace the paved walkway that's in the, the main entrance to the community center, which is in disrepair. So, that's, and that's long been an item that we've had on our radar, we just haven't been able to fund it through operating funds, and I think we're at a point where I need to do some, some work to that walkway because it's becoming a hazard at all times of the year. So, the total request from the non-capital reserve for these two improvements would be thirty-three thousand dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Dunleavy before we get to a motion? Okay, motion be in order to approve the request from Laconia Parks and Recreation Department as presented to utilize non-capital reserve funds in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars for projects at the Weers Community Center to improve the safety and accessibility of the facility. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Haynes, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can stay put, right?
Yes.
Because the next one is Dunleavy also, and that's 20D, a request from the Laconia Parks and Recreation Department to utilize funds from the Endicott Rock Parks Special Revenue Fund for the Weers Beach Bath House Door Replacement Project.
That's an expensive door.
That's a lot of words. Yes, so the Weers Beach Bath House has three doors, one is for the restrooms, one for the lifeguard room, and we've, they've gotten beyond their useful life. We're hoping to get another year out of them, but one of them's been damaged from vandalism, so it's, we're in, we're in a situation where we need to repair those as soon as possible. This request is for eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars, which is a quoted amount that we received from a contractor. The, this, the request is for, through what they call the Endicott Beach Special Revenue Fund, which was set up, well, going back maybe ten, fifteen years ago, and the, that revenue is, is made up of revenue from parking, revenue at Weers Beach itself, so it's getting reinvested in the facility, it's being funded from revenue that's by the users of the park, essentially. That current, I think the balance in that account is, is it fifty-eight thousand maybe in that particular account, so there's plenty to cover the cost of this.
Any questions of Mr. Dunleavy before we get to a motion?
I got one for the manager. Does the money from Bike Week that goes over that, was it twenty-five or something, does that go into this too?
It's not from Motorcycle Week, but the first twenty-five thousand that's collected in parking from that beach parking lot flows into the general fund, and anything above the twenty-five thousand goes into this special revenue account, as Kevin said, for improvements at the beach. So, I think last year, the number was thirty-eight thousand that the beach generated, so the first twenty-five, general fund thirteen went into this account.
All right, a motion be in order to approve the request from the Lake, from the Laconia Parks and Recreation Department as presented to utilize funds from the Endicott Rock Park Special Revenue Fund in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars for the Weers Beach Bath House Door Replacement Project. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, next up is a request to authorize a city manager to sign a license agreement between the city and Formosa L Company LLC. I believe they are the owners of the business downtown known as the Whiskey Barrel. Recognize Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the mayor is correct, there was a license agreement because on the backside of the building, the non-main street side, the Beacon West side, the property sits very close to city property, and back in 1996, actually, the, the tenant of the building entered into a license agreement with the city of Laconia for a ten-year period with two, five-year options to construct what I shared with you earlier tonight in a picture, a nice fence, little lattice work, screening to hide dumpsters, mechanicals, vents, all that type of stuff from the view as you're driving down Beacon Street West and looking at it. The business is changing hands, not the property itself, but the business is changing hands, and in doing the research, they came up with the fact that this license existed and nobody had any institutional memory going back to 1996 until it was discovered. So, this had been in place, it lapsed in 2016 because of the transfer of the, of the tenant into the building, taking it over. This was discovered, and we're just looking more as a housekeeping to update it. There's no change, the same infrastructure is always there, I believe, and staff believes it's a lot better to look at that fencing than what would be behind it and visible to the public. So, asking for your support to authorize me to enter into a new license, license agreement.
Any questions before we get to a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilor Hamel moves to authorize the city manager to sign the license agreement as presented between the city of Laconia and Formosa Company LLC. Is there a second? Councilor Cheney seconds that motion, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. And lastly, under new business tonight, we have a, a- ...proposal regarding a, the, from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for a, for the discontinuance of a portion of the right-of-way on Route 11B, otherwise known as Endicott Street East. Correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this because it affects my property, so.
All right, so, Mr., Councilor Hosmer is an abutter to the property in question, so he has recused himself from this discussion. Thank you for that. And, Mr. Myers, can you explain the situation to us?
Again, Mr. Mayor, so we were approached by one of the three abutters, not the Hosmer family, probably about a year or so ago, regarding the stone wall on this portion of 11B, and it basically encompasses, if you were standing on 11B looking down Summit Ave, it's the Hosmer property, which is the first house to the left of Summit Ave, and there's two properties to the right of Summit Ave, and there's a stone wall along there that is in the right-of-way of the State Department of Transportation. One of the abutters who brought this to our attention had requested that the state do some repairs to the stone wall because it was starting to fall and, and becoming unattractive and dangerous, and the state indicated that they didn't have the funds and it wasn't a high priority for them. The request came, well, could you discontinue that portion of the right-of-way, and in essence, move the state right-of-way just on the other side of the wall, and then the abutters would agree to maintain the stone wall. So, that was the request to the state. The state did finally agree to discontinue the right-of-way and, in essence, draw new, new surveying, new boundary lines of where the right-of-way was, so this was paid for by Mr. Mitchell, one of the abutters who had brought this to us. So, this, you- So this, you can see the maps, you can see the letter from state DOT indicating that they have discontinued the right-of-way based on the survey in front of you. So now to the city point, we had a couple of options. We could either go through numerous steps to go out and determine that we had no need for this as a Class 6 road, and we would have to go out and do a site visit and review the layout, notify the abutting property owners by certified mail, do this 30 minutes, sorry, 30 days in advance, hold a public hearing, go through the number of steps that I've listed for you, under one through eight, and then respond to the DOT that we've taken those steps and we have no interest in having this be a Class 5 roadway, let it go to Class 6, and we accept the discontinuance. Or, we were advised by legal counsel, that entire process is optional, and if we have no objection to what the state is recommending, we can just let the state know that we're fine with it, and it'll be accepted as it stands in front of you today. So in discussing with the mayor and trying to avoid a special onsite meeting for something that does seem to not be impacting anybody else but the three property owners who are all in favor of this and will be maintaining that stone wall, which will certainly, you know, add some aesthetic value along that stretch of road, staff recommendation in conjunction with the mayor is to take no action, and this will become effective at the end of 60 days of us being notified.
Everybody understand that? If we do nothing, it becomes the property of the abutters. And that seems to be the path of least resistance here.
So basically, just the state disposing of that land?
Yeah, state's doing, they're noticing us.
Go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we have the option, again, to declare it Class 6 road if we had a vested interest, I mean, if that truly led somewhere, and we wanted that to be a Class 6 road for public access, though even though a Class 6 road is not maintained, it might make sense, but in this case, it's running along 11B, doesn't lead to anywhere. We have no desire to take over the maintenance of that stone wall.
Yep.
Any questions before we get to a motion? All right, I would like to comment quickly here, tongue-in-cheek, that I knew that last fall I might have made an enemy or two in the Department of Transportation, and I note on the letter that's in our packet here that the letter is addressed to Robert Hamill, chairman of the city council.
I saw that.
Duly noted. A coup d'etat is in the works here, I think.
Congratulations, Bob.
I was wondering why I was getting a certified letter in the mail from him, saying, oh no, I'm in trouble, you know?
Okay, motion being ordered to take no action on the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's discontinuance of a portion of Route 11B as presented to allow the discontinued portion to become Class 6 pursuant to RSA 230:57 after 60 days. Council Hamill makes that motion, is there a second? Council Cheney seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor of basically doing nothing, please raise a hand. We have four votes in the affirmative, and the motion carries.
Kind of like a Seinfeld episode.
All right, we are on to unfinished business, and the first item of unfinished business is parking on Pogus Park Road to remind the council that this item was on our agenda on May 29th, and it was tabled to this meeting, so we should start with the motion to take this issue off the table. Made by Council Hamill, seconded by Council Haynes. All those in favor of taking this item off the table, please raise a hand. I have five, five votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Hamill.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the council to send this proposal that the Pogus Park people came up with to Public Works and ask them to work with them on a, you know, something to be able to bring back to us and that we could
A specific proposal?
Yeah, have them do a study on this here, and, you know, maybe their engineer could help out also since they've done some of that, come back with a price of what the whole thing would cost, and I think they
What the split would be?
You know, they're amenable to helping and see, yeah, exactly. In other words, to come to some kind of solution towards their end.
And word from DOT as to
Yeah, through the, the whole thing.
Just to get clarification, was the motion to go to the Department of Public Works or the Public Works Committee? The city council committee?
Well, I think it should, I think it should go to Public Works and let the two sides
I was just clarifying.
iron it out, and then if it's going to come to the Public Works Committee, then that can happen too.
I think what we would do is, in conjunction with Public Works and state DOT, try to facilitate a three-way meeting with the residents, the state, because the state's going to determine
Oh, absolutely.
how much, if any, we can even consider trying to do some planning on. So to me, that's the important first step, is to bring DOT into the mix to determine what, if anything, and how far they will allow something.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm not really making a motion, just making a proposal, or I could make a motion. Would you rather have a motion?
Motion's fine.
Okay, then what I just said would be the motion.
All right, so have you got the motion, or would you like him to repeat it?
It's on.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Council Haynes seconds that motion, discussion. So one, one thing that I would like clarified is the, the issue as it came to us originally was a request from an unnamed resident to eliminate on-street parking on both sides of the road. So has, has that issue been addressed?
My understanding from what the residents were saying tonight is, rather than taking that as a interim step or a Band-Aid step, look at it more comprehensively and see if there's an opportunity with some state land to do something different that, that solves the challenges of the on-street parking as a first approach. That would be my take, and what we would try to do before we would
All right, so, so to clarify again, what's, what parking regulations are in effect there now? So we understand that.
Nothing, there are no parking limitations right now, no restrictions right now.
Okay.
Does that
So you can park theoretically on either side of the street?
Does that pose any kind of an immediate issue in terms of emergency vehicles or any kind of danger, or?
The paved surface is 19 feet wide, typically a car takes about nine feet, so that would leave you 10 feet to get by, and depending upon how the parking pattern is, if one's on one side of the road, one's on the other side of the road, you may not be able to get emergency vehicles through. So by parking just on one side, at least you got one area clear.
Can we ask how they feel about that?
So I guess what I'm asking is, at this point, for clarification, I understand the, the, the parking on, I guess what we would call the west side of the road, which would be the railroad track side.
Correct.
So if we did that, what would be the, what, what is being looked for on the east side of the road, on the, on the side the homes are on?
At this point, there would be open parking unless you supported, and it's actually the daughter of one of the residents' requests, to make both sides no parking, in which case the street would be no parking at any, at any point or any location on Pogus Park Road South. We haven't had a request for north.
Because this request was to ban parking on both sides.
Correct.
The original request?
Well, the original request from the property owner's daughter, because the age that they were getting was on both sides of the road.
So if we, if we did this project and we did parallel parking on the west side of the road, if we continued to allow, by lack of ordinance, parking on the east side of the road, what effect would that have, if any?
You'd be basically back to the condition that you had prior to putting the ditch in, which, again, would depend upon how the people park.
Would that eliminate the issue of emergency vehicles and garbage trucks and all that sort of?
It would, because that's what they're operating with before, but the suggestion that they have, you're talking at least a year to 18 months away, because that's all going to have to go through the Department Environmental Services process to get permits, because you're talking new drainage structures going to the lake, which drives all the requirements for, you know, what's the design, what you put into the railroad right-of-way. There may be areas that we actually have to leave open for green space. I mean, all of that is part of the, part of this effort.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor made by Council Hamill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I got maybe one thing. Probably as part of the discussion that they should have would be to address the parking that you have now. I mean, obviously, you want to be able to have emergency vehicles go to your homes if you need them, so you might look into maybe one side not parking and parking on the other side and cooperate by doing that. I mean, it's, it's something that's beneficial for you, all of you, so that could be part of your discussion, I would think.
Yeah, I think, I think I would agree with that, with Council Hamill, that, that what if anything to do about parking or non-parking on the east side of the road should be addressed as part of the
Yeah, and now type of thing, not like two years from now.
And that could be a temporary no parking while we're working over the next 12 or 18 months to whatever a more permanent fix might be, subject to revision at a later date.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Is that clear, Mr. Anderson?
Could I just ask that folks who are here, that we give them a pad of paper, we just get some names and contact information if we don't already have it?
I think I, I'm the one who emailed them.
Okay, perfect, I just want to make sure we don't leave here and go, who was that?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If there's not any other discussion, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of Council Hamill's motion, please raise a hand. About five votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, thank you.
And I just have a comment. I mean, if there seems to be safety issues involved, to come back and address the council on that in terms of what we need to do in a timely fashion, I don't want to sidetrack the cooperation and try to work out a solution here, but I don't want anybody to be put in danger either.
Okay, the second item of unfinished business on our agenda is, has to do with the New England Solar Garden, anything new on that tonight?
I think this item was tabled, so the first thing we would have to do is bring it off the table. So I think the request when it was
I looked at the minutes on that, it doesn't say anything about tabling.
It was, it was tabled pending a contract brought before you, as Council Littman wanted to actually look at the
That's right.
contract, not the spec sheet was going to be the basis for the contract. So what you have before you tonight is the contract for the land lease and for the pilot agreement for the project as presented.
Okay, so this is new.
The contract has been populated, reviewed by legal counsel, reviewed by New England Solar Gardens, and is in its final version before you tonight, with staff recommendation to approve.
Give me half a second here, if you would indulge me, I just want to make sure we're procedurally doing this correctly. Minutes read, Council Littman moves to authorize the city manager to draft an agreement with New England Solar Garden in partnership with Nobus Engineering and New England Commercial Solar Services for the purposes of creating a solar array on the site of the former landfill located on Route 11B under the terms of the land lease, with a summary of which outlined on page 96, 97 of this agenda, seconded by Council Hamill, the motion passed with all in favor.
I think the intent was
They're about tabling.
I think it's on your agenda that this item was tabled, I think the minutes probably don't, but I think he tabled it pending seeing a fully executed contract was the request, and that's what we've got before you tonight.
What difference does it mean if we, if we just move it off the table, whether we tabled it or not? If we just move it off
I'm sorry?
What difference does it, does it matter? We just move it off the table, we solve the problem?
I still think it's necessary, but I'm happy to entertain a motion if one of you wants to make a motion to bring it off the table that never existed.
I'll do that table.
Thank you. Council Hamill, is there a second?
Sure. I'll second that.
All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, so it's back on the table, and I'll recognize the city manager to explain the contract.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, on the second page, that was the summary page, that was what we always spoke of, those numbers are now just populated into a two-part agreement. One part is for the land lease rate and one part is for the tax pilot rate. I do not fully understand, I understand what we have before us. I don't understand why there was an RSA 72:74-1 that deals with pilot agreements and owners of renewable generation facilities and the governing body of, in the municipality in which the facility is located, may after public hearing execute a pilot agreement. So I, I don't understand the nuance on why at all, couldn't be a land lease versus, part of it's in a land lease and part of it's in a pilot, but I'm assuming it's somehow how these types of renewable energy facilities were approved by the legislature, and that's what we're going under. So it's broken into the two pieces, there's two different agreements. If you approve this tonight, the next, it will start working on the process of entering into an agreement, the applicant will start the process of going before DES and doing the planning board profit process simultaneously, so the two can run on a parallel path. I will be coming back with you, asking you to schedule a public hearing as we need to do to approve the pilot agreement, because that's what state law says we have to do. So tonight's is to approve me to execute the contract, and then we would come back and ask you to schedule a public hearing so the public has an opportunity to chime in just on the pilot portion, but that's a state requirement, and again, I don't understand the nuances of why these facilities are set up that way in state law, but they are.
So as far as the contract is concerned, with New England Solar Garden, if we approve this tonight, it's not coming back to us? This is it?
This is it on the contract. We will come back to hold a public hearing just on the city receiving
This gives you permission to finish executing
Yes.
the contract itself.
We will come back with a, yes, with a public hearing to say the city is going to and accept a $12,320 a year pilot agreement with this entity.
Everybody understand what we're doing here? Questions before we get to votes?
But it, thank you, it seems like we're having the public input session after we already execute the contract?
That, or legal counsel is saying that's when you don't schedule the pilot until you know that the council has approved that they're willing to accept those terms.
Okay.
Right. And then a second piece I have is, we have spoken with, with Mr. Latender, who owns the property, and the developer, and the concrete company, and we believe on certain conditions and drier days, there could be an opportunity to access the property not using the city road on wet conditions, and just because of the weight of the vehicle, if they are working on a wet day, they would do it, but we believe that the majority of the time, we would be able to access that property not using the public street, which was a concern about it.
Which access point?
They're coming in through the construction road on phase two of the development, and we think we even may be able at some point to get out onto the access road that runs through the site from the construction road, if I'm saying that properly. So we believe there's some options there under decent conditions, again, under wet, muddy conditions, we would come in, but we're hoping the majority of the time. Yep.
Yeah, one quick question. In reading this, they, they said something about a series of poles, obviously it would be to take the electricity off of the property. Do you know where those are going to be?
Those already exist on the property, because there's an easement forever source for power lines right there, and they'll be tapping right into existing poles.
So this, the second part, having to do with the pilot, will come back to us as new business next time?
New business will be on the agenda to refer to a public hearing, it'll be the first reading, refer to the public hearing in two weeks, so we'll put that on the June 25th agenda and take care of it in July.
So if we pass this motion that's before us tonight, this leaves the agenda, this particular item?
Yes.
All right, a motion being ordered to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with New England Sol, New England Solar Garden in partnership with Nobus Engineering and New England Commercial Solar Services for the purpose of creating a solar array on the site of the city's former landfill located on Route 11B under the terms of the land lease. Council Hosmer makes that motion, Council Hamill seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. A lot of business tonight, sure. Okay, council comments? One tonight?
I have two.
Two, all right. Council Cheney?
One is a, is a, a housekeeping thing for me. I was wondering if the manager could, could talk to the IT people about getting to the settings, which I've spent most of the evening looking for, and fixing these so they don't every 30 seconds go black. I think we could extend those to
We can look at that.
I don't know, that's a pretty big request.
It shuts off, you know?
That's above my pay grade, but I can find someone who knows how to do that.
I'm still using paper.
I know, and I'm headed back in that direction if we can't fix this. The second
Mine doesn't do that.
Probably because yours has a different setting.
Yeah, probably you have different settings.
You've been here longer, he hasn't earned that privilege yet.
The second thing settings to be different from his.
The second thing, Mayor, is more serious on my part. And that is, I'd like to go back to the issue of Brewster for just a moment.
May.
As a member of that committee that looked at it, I am extremely upset that the citizens of Laconia never got a chance to see what was offered. And I don't know what the solution to that is, but there was an awful lot in that offer that I think the citizens should have been made aware of or should have had an opportunity to review before they assumed that we were rushing to punish the fire department or whatever other excuse they seemed to come up with. I, I think the proposal was well worth the public seeing and then discussing whether or not we should have headed in that direction. It was an outstanding proposal. That is not a criticism of the fire department. I have never said they don't do an outstanding job. The question is, could these people have offered us more? And, when you review the fire chief's budget, there's a page of concerns, of things that don't get done because they're too busy. Well, we could have taken 70% of their busy away and let them get to the multi-unit inspections and other things that he feels desperately need to be done. And so, I just wanted to express my concern that we didn't give the public a chance. Brewster didn't give the public a chance to
I don't think it was Brewster.
Well, I don't either. And, and several of us, I suspect, have heard rumors about what happened to Brewster. And I hope at some point that comes out. But, in the meantime, this was a, this was a viable offer by a reputable company to provide the city of Laconia with an improvement economically in how we provided their service and a track record of providing good service. My recollection is that the purchasing gentleman talked to the fire chiefs in all the towns that Brewster serves and got outstanding recommendations. So, I think they could have worked with our fire department. I think the fire department would have been better off, and I think the city would have been better off. And I thank you for the time to express that.
Just a second. I just want to follow up quickly with a question. Is that Brewster proposal still available digitally?
We did. We posted that, and we did that in the press announcement. So, granted, it wasn't out for a great length of time. It was probably out, I think, two Wednesdays ago, so probably has been public for nine or 10 days.
Somebody wanted to access it.
It is still there on the website, under the purchasing page, right on the homepage of the purchasing part of the city website. Right at the bottom there, we have the RFP and Brewster's response.
Okay, thank you.
There are, Mayor, a number of people, like the counselor from Ward 1, who don't go and look at things like that. And I think a public hearing would have made that more, would have filled that out better.
I agree. I agree.
Councilor Haynes?
I agree with Councilor Cheney. And I, you know, and as I look back and think about the process, had we not done our due diligence, we would have been criticized for that. And I think anybody that contacted me, I contacted, I got in touch with my constituents and explained, it was a process. We had to go through the process. It wasn't a quick fix. And they just didn't allow the process to, to be completed. And I'm upset.
One other thing, Mayor, if I might. Several of the people who called me in the course of our back-and-forth, I would say, I have to ask you one question. How did you vote on the tax cap? And, and in many cases, I started to get a hubba-da, 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 because they'd voted for the tax cap. But the thought that the city council might be looking to try and keep costs down hadn't, the two thoughts hadn't gone together. So...
Anyone else? Councilor Hammel?
Yeah, well, since everybody's weighing in on it. You know, there was, there was a lot said about privatization. Well, if you really look at what we have, for 19 years, we've had privatization. The city did not run the fire, the ambulance service. It was the hospital. The hospital bought all the ambulances. They belonged to the hospital. All the supplies, equipment, everything on those ambulances belonged to the hospital. They paid the firemen. They paid the ambulance director, who worked for the hospital. And they took all the money that the ambulance runs produced. So, basically, we had a privatized ambulance service right from the get-go. No different. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Council comments tonight? Ask the city manager. We have no need for a public or non-public session that I'm aware of. All right. So, in the absence of any objection, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 8:35 PM. Thank you.